I'd like to resume our meeting tonight. We met for a closed session and I will defer to our lawyer, Mona Abraham.
There's nothing to report, Chair Perez.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Commissioner Austin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any requests to speak in regards to our closed session before we start tonight's meeting? Okay, great. I'll go to next item, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Have any? Correspondence and staff communication from the-
I'm sorry, Chair Perez, we do have one for item A.
Oh, item A.
One slip, yes.
Oh. Bill Lowell, would you please come up?
Thank you, Madam Chair, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I noticed we still haven't got a replacement snack bar across the street and I was just thinking, I'm having a hard time trying to find a place that carries a soft drink choice containing neither sugar nor caffeine nor grapefruit juice, which is those kind of things I have to avoid and I'm sure there's a lot of other senior citizens that have to avoid that, but I noticed they have one over Taco Bell called So Be Lean, put out by Pepsi, and hey, let's get one of those over here if nothing else. And I mentioned this at the next point to the City Council over the years, probably a couple dozen times, and that is our speaker system. We just have this speaker plus your speakers. We don't have extension speakers out above where the audience sits like they do over at the Sacramento City Council Hall. And so if nothing else, when I consider who I might consider voting for, for the Assembly in the primary, I know two of those candidates are from the other side, but they could, they might as well say, hey, we believe in the public's ability to understand better what our City Council or Planning Commission or whomever is saying. And too often our City Council members are either whispering among themselves, they think I'm hard of hearing, but I don't have any problem hearing what they say over at the Sacramento Regional Transit Meetings or the Yola Bus Meetings or the County Department Employment Social Services. So like I say, I think, I think we should definitely do a study and make recommendations for extension speakers so that our audience can better understand what you folks and our City Council and other leaders are saying. And I will let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell.
Can I ask something of staff?
Sure.
David, I believe there are speakers up there. Perhaps maybe we just make sure that they're turned on.
Yeah, we can communicate with our, sort of the wizard behind the scenes back there to make sure the speakers, everything is operating properly.
Thank you. Good seeing you again, Bill.
We'll go on to item B, correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, thank you, Chair Perez. Two items to note for you briefly. You should have a memorandum from Kathy Allen in front of you regarding item number three. This is a letter that we received after your packets were produced for you. And then secondly, I would encourage all of you to view the council meeting stream online from last night's meeting if you didn't see it already. The council took up several items that will, are in the Planning Commission's jurisdiction and will be coming to you very soon over subsequent meetings. In particular Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan, the Barn Project, and then also our efforts in Washington on the HUD Sustainable Grant that we are working on, which is also partially on tonight's agenda. So all those items will be coming before the Planning Commission fairly soon and so it will be certainly be beneficial to see where the planning, the City Council was on those matters from a policy statement to help inform our discussion, subsequent discussions we will have here at Planning Commission. So that concludes my correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Item C, disclosure of ex parte communications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I spoke with one of the property owners affected by the telecommunication policy changes, which is item, agenda item number three.
I had ex parte communications on item number three.
Madam Chairman, I also spoke with people on item number three.
Any other commissioners? Thank you. Next we'll go to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the May first commission meeting.
I'll move approval of the May first 2014 commission meeting minutes.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, passed. We'll go on to the irregular agenda, Public Workshop on the West Capital Connection Study.
Yes, and our guest starring from our Housing and Community Investment Group, Senior Administrative Analyst Katie Yancy will present this item tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having the opportunity to present some of the work that we've been undertaking with the Sustainable Communities HUD Grant. This is also a follow-up to the Grand Gateway Master Plan that came in front of the Planning Commission last spring and was approved by the City Council in June of 2013. This is an overview map of the area that was affected by the Grand Gateway Master Plan area. The Grand Gateway Master Plan area was three publicly owned parcels that were covered by three separate planning documents that did not cohesively mingle together for a single mixed-use development. We received $100,000 infill streamlining grant to do this project and we prepared a document that included new streetscape design standards, new frontage standards, new density model, new parking standards that were designed to guide this development project. Its focus was on the relationship between mixed-use development and enhanced connectivity and how streetscapes can inform how build-out will occur and the relationship between the public and private realm. The objective was to create a transit-oriented development area since the project was going to be along the streetcar line. This was the selected mixed-use development alignment that the council had picked. As you can see, it's a moderately dense project that has a mixed use of commercial, residential, and flexible office spaces, including a large parking structure is located on Block C. Block D is an affordable housing project that's being constructed as part of the Prop 1(c) obligation for the Bridge District improvements. The enhanced connectivity that was studied looked to bring the Civic Center and the Bridge District and the Washington Neighborhood closer together, sought to find new routes of both pedestrian bicycle traffic as well as vehicular traffic, looked at mid-block crossings, the interaction with streetcar, and how we could enhance the overhaul movement of people and goods through the area. We looked at bicy, new bicycle trails and the creation of parklets that allowed for outdoor open space areas in an urban environment. Following the completion of the Grand Gateway Master Plan, the city received a $400,000 Community Challenge Grant from the federal government. In-kind work is also going to cover $300,000 of the work that's being done. And using CDBG funds, we will have a total of almost $800,000 that will be committing to updating the Washington-specific plan analysis. The purpose of this grant is to provide a comprehensive analysis of the infill project area and to guide urban development that reduces vehicle miles traveled and creates a new walkable community amongst the existing context. There'll be two final deliverables with the community developed, excuse me, with the Community Sustainable Grant, a transit-oriented, transit-oriented development strategy that allows for transit needs to be considered, infill opportunities, neighborhood preservation, as well as a complete community strategy that's focused on quality of life issues. How the West Capital Connection Study came about was that when we presented the material about the Grand Gateway Master Plan, at the same time the Public Works Department was presenting information about the overcrossing for the UP rail that's in between Garden Street and Fifth Street and looking at some potential improvements that would have either eliminated or reduced vehicular traffic. And both the Planning Commission and the City Council expressed concerns over what this would do to Rayleigh's and Welcome Grove. As a follow-up action in the Grand Gateway Master Plan, we agreed to study what would happen to those land uses as they eventually redeveloped, as Welcome Grove is on, currently on the market, and how we could resolve the two constraints that are on the site, the overpass and the dual intersection that's located on Fifth Street at West Capitol Avenue and Tower Bridge Gateway. As you can see from this exhibit, there's significant development that's planned around these two constraints, the Grand Gateway Master Plan, as well as the West Capitol Commons, or excuse me, I think it's called Capitol Yards Project now, that's currently underway. As I said earlier, Welcome Grove is also on the market. We anticipate developments to be occurring on that site as the property is zoned for riverfront mixed use, which requires a minimum dwelling units of 25 dwelling units to the acre. As part of our larger strategy, we're also looking at other underutilized and vacant parcels and attempting to analyze what the potential build-out scenario would be for the entire Washington Neighborhood. As a result, these constraints are something that need to be analyzed and I'll be presenting some alternatives, both short-term and long-term alternatives for new circulation that will support the revitalization of these vacant parcels that surround this section of road. As you can see, the underpass is very narrow, cars barely fit, and there is no significant pedestrian or bicycle opportunity. The intersection that's located at Fifth and West Capitol Avenue is also very awkwardly placed and pedestrians that are crossing at this intersection are often crossing in conflict with left-hand turn movements onto Fifth Street. Our desire with this study is to address something that was brought up in the 1996 Washington-specific plan, which is that this intersection is no longer sustainable. Current levels of service, although they are functional, are showing that there is indeed stress on this intersection and we've received complaints from the public about safety issues at this intersection. At any time, a variety of stressors could make this intersection unserviceable. When analyzed, once the Grand Gateway Project comes on board and the West Capitol Commons Project comes on board, this intersection will fail. It is our desire to be as proactive as possible and come to the Planning Commission and the City Council with some recommendations on how we might react in the event any of these stressors trigger work to be done at this intersection. The first alternative that we analyzed is before you. The short-term alternative would shut down West Capitol Avenue for vehicular traffic east of the overcrossing. We would prepare, be prepared to install new access points for the Welcome Grove on G Street and a new access point for the Southern Rayleigh's Building on Tower Bridge Gateway with sufficient access already occurring for the Rayleigh's Headquarters Buildings off of Fifth and G Street. This would allow us to incorporate something that we receive, a direction we received from the council upon the adoption of the Grand Gateway Master Plan. The council had requested that we investigate the possibility of putting in a paseo from the Civic Center to the riverfront to create an opportunity for pedestrians and bicyclists who do not want to use Tower Bridge Gateway to have an opportunity to leisurely access the riverfront and the Civic Center. The long-term solution that we analyzed relies on the rail being removed and creates two new connections and a new universal street through the Welcome Grove property and on the existing rail tracks. This policy, the policy objectives that are attached with this approach are in the existing Washington-specific plan, which asks that we look to respect and create a street grid that allows for an urban environment, to create new pedestrian connections and a walkable community. The second alternative that was analyzed created a private road through part of Rayleigh's existing parking lot and allow for access to continue on Welcome Grove and a small paseo shared area so access can continue to occur on the annex building. The long-term would seek to reconnect at Seventh Street and allow the short-term access to continue. This would also allow the paseo to occur. Alternative C reconnects Sixth Street into an L-shaped roadway, local-serving roadway at a right-in, right-out intersection onto Fifth Street, also allowing the paseo to continue. We reconnect at Seventh Street similar to alternative B. These alternatives were studied. We have analyzed the level of surface and if you have any questions particularly related to those engineering issues, our consultant with Farron Pierce is here this evening and he'd be happy to answer those questions at the conclusion of this presentation. Staff received this preliminary report last year at the timeframe of the Grand Gateway Master Plan. We've since circulated this document under the guise of the new HUD Grant and we have before you a recommendation and we're seeking guidance this evening about this recommendation and what we would like to bring forward to the City Council for inclusion in the analysis that we're doing with the HUD Grant. We're recommending in the event that the constraints that I described earlier, either the UP bridge or new development coming online that would require the intersection at Fifth Street and West Capitol Avenue to be shut down or modified, our first recommendation that we would bring before the Planning Commission to consider and the City Council to consider in the event those constraints came forward would be to shut down the road entirely and to create new access points off G and Tower Bridge Gateway. Emergency traffic would still be allowed on this section of West Capitol Avenue, but it would be turned entirely to bike and ped. Phase two would reconnect the grid at Sixth and West, excuse me, at Sixth West Capitol Avenue and Fifth Street. It would make a right-in, right-out only onto Fifth Street. It would reestablish frontage for Welcome Grove and for the Rayleigh's South Building, but we would maintain the access points on Tower Bridge Gateway and C Street. And the southern portion of this local street that runs west, excuse me, east-west on Long West Capitol Avenue would continue to maintain the paseo effect. And the long-term objective would be to reconnect Grand Gateway and the Civic Center into the Washington Neighborhood. This can be achieved by either having the rail be removed or by a significant investment by the City Council to create a new underpass for Seventh Street connection to occur. This allows all the objectives that are already included in the 1996 specific plan to occur. We would be reestablishing the grid, creating new pedestrian opportunities, and looking for recreational opportunities to the riverfront that support connecting the Civic Center to the waterfront. These three recommended phases were brought to both Welcome Grove and Rayleigh's prior to bringing them to the Planning Commission. Additionally, we had a public meeting prior to the Planning Commission to solicit feedback from the general public. I'd like to share with you that Welcome Grove is currently under, excuse me, is currently on the market for sale. We've met both with the current owner and the broker. The current owner has some concerns about carving up the parcel. They feel like this configuration that's in front of you may diminish the value of their site. Additionally, the broker has also expressed some concerns about this configuration because they're uncertain what they might be marketing this site for. Rayleigh's has expressed some concerns about their parking, but we feel confident that we can work through an alternative with them that would satisfy both our urban parking standards and meet their current needs. Our next step is to bring this presentation to the City Council and solicit their feedback. We're also looking to have them reiterate their direction as it relates to the paseo concept that they brought forward with the adoption of the Grand Gateway Master Plan in addition to revisit this issue related to the UP bridge and the improvements that may be necessary in order for it to be seismically retrofitted. The council never took any formal action about those expenditures and the timing for that is, in your word, amorphous and we're not sure when those improvements will happen, but we'd like the council to give us some direction on how they would like us to proceed in analyzing this with the HUD Grant work. We'll return to EDAC, the Planning Commission, the City Council in June, July, once we receive that direction from the City Council with an overall base map and a discussion of how streetcar works with these improvements. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your patience. I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you for your presentation. Do I have any questions for my commissioners? No, there are no requests to speak. Okay. Commissioner leaving.
Thank you, thank you, staff, and for Farron Pierce, for doing such a great job on And I did the same thing. Thank you Farron Pierce for the work on the document and to staff for their presentation. I really like the idea of the paseo concept, so I want to make sure that we do maintain that. Can staff explain to me why the modifications for the railroad overcrossing seem to be on the city's shoulders and not the railroad's responsibility for updating that bridge and allowing traffic?
I would be happy to give that my best efforts. Is my understanding that the agreement that exists with Union Pacific or the port, and again, I apologize for being a bit fuzzy on this detail, that is a structure that is actually owned by the city and the responsibility of those improvements being done would be on the city's shoulders. However, I spoke with the port manager and he indicated that at this time, he did not believe that there was any heavy cargo that would necessitate those improvements and since the port business plan is taking the port in a different direction than the movement of heavy cargo, he, he wanted that to be shared with the Planning Commission, that he didn't think that there was any immediate need for those improvements to be made, but that would be a cost that would be borne by the city due to the agreement.
And all three alternatives actually include a new bridge in the long-term plan?
Or the West Side Rail relocation occurring.
I have some other comments. To get on to that paseo concept, the one that, I'm on alternative A, the one that comes from Seventh Street, and this is a, I'm sorry, it's not a paseo, this is the universal street. It would appear to me that actually this could be done on the short-term as well to help connectivity, almost maintain the grid, but, but it's a universal street. Smaller street would be more pedestrian, bike-friendly, and could easily be tied in to the short-term connections. Oh, long-term. The Welcome Grove has a hotel there in between Rayleigh's North and, and the park. In two of the alternatives, that hotel would have to go away. Is that correct? Am I-
The conceptual drawings show that, but we haven't done any engineering work, so I couldn't tell you exactly if it has to go away. But the last thing I would also mention is, the long-term, I should probably articulate it, is something that we hope to do in conjunction with the Welcome Grove redevelopment, not something that we hope to do in, in advance of it. We hope to work with whoever purchases the Welcome Grove property to figure out where the best place is to place these roads.
Okay, well, if you align with Sixth Street, it runs into the hotel, though. Okay.
It most likely will, yes.
I'm not a huge fan of an ingress, egress off of Tower Bridge Gateway, but as the alternatives go, I actually like A the best. But it does require the relocation of the railroads to make it actually feasible for B doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And alternative C is almost replacing what we have with some additions, but that, the intersection at Fifth and West Capitol, right near Tower Bridge Gateway, that would maintain or that would stay there, right?
It would become, it would be limited to right-in, right-out only traffic.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, Commissioner.
I, I guess, I've talked to a few people over in that Broderick area and they, there's very little conversation being held with those people. Have you had workshops with all these people over there? Because they're feeling like you're just cutting them out.
You mean Washington?
Washington Neighborhood, whatever you want to call it over there.
We had a public meeting before this-
You invited everybody from that area to it?
We did, sir.
I, they didn't, the people I talked to never got notified of it over in that area. They're very concerned that you're cutting off their access to West Capitol Avenue. And of course, if they want to take a bicycle or walk, they can go, but there's no real way of getting to West Capitol without going all the way out and around.
On to Tower-
And the only people I see with bicycles and shopping carts are the people walking that area. And that doesn't seem like the kind of people you want to put into a new subdivision are people with shopping carts. I'm just trying to figure out, and I was kind of back to what Russ was talking about, if we have a railroad that it's not safe for the people to drive their car under and that's part of the premise that you're using to get rid of it, why would we let people walk under it?
I'm going to address the last part of what you said first, if that's okay. So they, in relationship to the, the bridge, the UP bridge, it will need to be seismically retrofitted if additional heavy cargo goes across it. At this time, there's no, that we are not anticipating that those improvements will be needed. If they do become needed, the city would be in a position that they would have to make those improvements. Those improvements would eliminate vehicular traffic. It would, I don't believe that the structure is necessarily unsafe. It is just not sufficient for the type of weight that the cargo would allow to go over it.
I think Commissioner Moore, the other issue with that is the current undercrossing is already substandard. It does not accommodate bicycles or pedestrians under the current, you know, structure-
Well, there's a sidewalk there.
-as well, and, and it's narrow. It's, I don't believe it even meets the minimum clearance the fire department needs. So it's, it's sort of substandard to begin with and if those seismic improvements were ever needed to be made to sort of buttress that facility, there's just no more room left underneath.
And, you know, I mean, I'm, I guess, kind of my comment was, you know, if you're not going to be able to put a car underneath there, I'd rather see us block it off completely so nobody could get through there because to have people going with shopping carts back and forth in that area doesn't seem like we're improving the area. But I'm still very concerned that the people in that vicinity out there just aren't notified what we're trying to do. I think there's, there's good things about every program you put out. So the right turn only off of, you know, West Capitol Avenue, that would make it a little easier maybe for people to deal with, but you got to kind of have an alternative somewhere and I'm not sure how we get to Sixth Street easily. I mean, you know, there's the talk that Welcome Grove's for sale, everything's for sale for the right- for the right price, so that's true. It has been for years been for sale for the right price. My concern is, Rayleigh's is moving out of that one office across the street, and I'm wondering if they're concerned about what we're doing here, you know, that.
We, as I indicated earlier, we met with Rayleigh's, they're concerned about their parking.
Right.
For their head, their main headquarters building.
Well, they're head, they moved the headquarters, they're going to move that office over.
They're vacating the southern building.
So, I mean, I'm hoping that we're talking to them, I'm more concerned about the neighbors who are saying that we're not communicating with them very well before we make a final decision, because they're feeling, the kind of the gist I got of their conversation was if we don't have West Capital Avenue, how do we participate in the city? You know, how do we get over there? We have to go to, you know, Cagle or Jefferson Boulevard to get back into the city? It seemed like it was very cumbersome for them, and they're older people, and they're not subject to change as easy as younger folks are. So, I, I think we have concerns there. I prefer, my preference, of course, is that we keep that whole thing open for traffic, I think, at this point, but I don't know how it's going to work. And why the railroad doesn't want to participate doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. You know, just tell them, we haven't got anything that's, you can put your trains across, so if you want to drive your train over it, you got to help fix it. I mean, it just doesn't seem logical that we have a train and they don't want to help do anything to get their trains over there. That would be my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Guerrero, do you have any comments?
Yes, I thank Commissioner Leibig for the comment on the, on what's currently in the area where there is, look at all these maps here, the Welcome Grove, Harvey Park Hotel, and the changes that would take place. I'd like to, you know, maybe get some, get some idea of some contingency plan.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
You know, if, if there's a purchaser that comes in with the, with the plan, with some kind of development, and taking a look at some contingency plan if things don't work out down the road, and how, you know, what, what the, what the situation would look like as an alternative if, if it doesn't meet Alternative A, because I do like Alternative A the best, and mainly because it meets, I have to flip through all the pages here, it meets our purpose and goals of improving bicycle and pedestrian facilities and improving access to the venues there that we're looking to improve, the River Walk and what we're planning on doing then. I also share the concern of Commissioner Moore about looking at the other communities that, you know, are interested in accessing this, and what we can do either through public transit, looking at ways to bring other residential communities that are feeling left out closer to the community. I've also heard this in other things as well, that where public transit is a barrier, they can't afford to, you know, you know, just getting from one place to another and using a recreational facility, for example. So, you know, I am interested in seeing, you know, and in the future, I'm also on the, you know, transportation advisory, so whatever I can do to help in that conversation, would like to see some more work done in improving public transportation.
David mentioned earlier that the, he encouraged you to look at the city council hearing last night.
Okay.
I would encourage the planning commissioners to look at the staff report that went with the HUD grant update. The attachment to that staff report is the schedule of the planning commission meetings that we're proposing, the city council meetings, advisory council meetings, and public meetings that we're proposing over the next six to nine months. One of them specifically deals with transit and streetcar.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, also, if possible, we have, we do have an aging community that has shared a strong interest to make sure that what we're doing down the road helps improve their mobility, and seeing that here's an opportunity as there is development in the future, I know we're being compliant with ADA, but I just want to make sure that our local aging community has some input as well, if there's maybe the aging commission can take a look at it.
I found that suggestion, thank you.
Thank you. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for, for putting together this proposal. I'm just generally supportive of staff's recommendation, kind of detailed in Chapter Six of, of the report put together by Ferrin Pierce, and I wanted to just bring up something else for us to consider, you know, just the other day, I was riding my bike from downtown Sacramento to City Hall here, and I think one of the reasons that you don't see a lot of folks riding their bikes is when I did go over the underpass, it's, it's a, it's a little hairy down there, and one of the reasons is that there, the sidewalk on the side is incredibly narrow, it wouldn't, it's not fully feasible to ride your bike there. I would imagine that it's not ADA accessible either, I don't think it's wide enough for a standardized wheelchair, maybe not even a walker, I mean, it's pretty narrow down there, and there's not really a bike lane. So, I do think that as we add more residents to that kind of riverside portion, as, you know, the properties that are currently being built and then those areas that are under development, we may see more people who would be walking or biking from that portion of the city into, you know, community center, City Hall, some of the retail just west of us here, and I do think that by having West Capital in that section from Fifth Street on as a dedicated, you know, bike ped area would be, would be a great improvement. One of my concerns also is that, as we, we're talking about adding, you know, dozens of households just with the project that's currently under construction right across Fifth Street, and, and that, that intersection's incredibly awkward, so I, I agree, I'm very concerned, and I'm glad that we're getting this addressed, I'm very concerned about simple things like when you have a River Cats game, people are parking and walking, and people are living and working in that intersection, it's really, really awkward, so I'm hoping that we can get this, and it looks like we're moving forward, we're doing the planning now, but hopefully we can get the short-term portion addressed relatively quickly, but long, so those are, that's my input just from the pedestrian, bike and ped aspect, but otherwise, I'm, I'm happy with, with recommendation of staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner. I would like to thank staff also. My only comment is, everybody else's concern about the bridge underpass, even now, driving up Fifth towards Tower Bridge, I hardly ever take the West Capital Avenue shortcut, like if I'm coming, you know, into town, I always go up to the Tower Bridge Gateway and then around to Garden, just because it's more aptly lit, and there are people that walk down there, especially at night, and so it is concerning, you know, driving, so I do support that. I hope that our recommendations will give you a little, our comments, and will give you a little more information on how to proceed forward. This was a presentation and discussion. If there's no other comments from our commissioners, I'll go ahead and go on to Agenda Item Number Public hearing and adoption of ordinance 14-1 PC regarding minor updates to the wireless communicate telecommunications facility policy.
See if, we'll let anyone, anyone who wishes to depart at this time can do so, and Associate Planner Kathy Island will present this item.
Good evening, Chair Perez and members of the commission. On May 1st, staff presented draft changes to the wireless policy in a workshop format. The changes were brought forward to address issues with the policy that were discovered during review of two new wireless projects, which are the first wireless projects submitted since the policy was revised last fall. Issues with the current policy center around Section G, which centers on prohibited facilities, specifically, this section prohibits facilities which are not set back at least twice the height of the tower to the nearest residential property line. This policy was designed with more urban residential properties in mind, and the new projects under consideration are both located on parcels zoned rural residential, which is also the zoning designation of the surrounding properties. Under the current policy, neither project could be approved due to they are not being able to meet the two-to-one setback ratio. Staff did present several options to the commission to address this issue. They ranged from eliminating the setback ratio altogether, making the setback a fixed amount at the commission's discretion, and changing the setback ratio to one-to-one based on distances measured from the pole to the nearest residence. During discussion of these alternatives, the commission expressed concern with altering the policy that had been updated so recently. The section regarding distances from residential structures has been debated at length by the commission, and when the policy was updated, this was intended to reduce aesthetic impacts from neighboring residential properties. Members of the commission were reluctant to change this portion of the policy as it had been thoroughly vetted when we changed the policy last fall. The commission was also not in favor of the one-to-one ratio based not on property lines but measured from the pole to nearest residential structures, and with this in mind, staff has changed Section G 3 to allow wireless structures to be located at the one-to-one ratio, but now measured from the tower to the nearest residentially zoned property line. This would still allow a setback from residential properties and could help discourage encroachment wireless facilities in residential neighborhoods. In thinking about this after the public workshop that we had, staff has also prepared an alternative recommendation for the commission. There are situations where state and federal regulations are directly applicable and may preempt specific city standards so that those standards cannot apply. These determinations could be determined on a case-to-case, case-by-case basis, and in those cases, the commission has the option to leave the policy as it is written if the commission determines the policy meets the goals and objectives of the city in regards to wireless facilities. The policy and its application can't be applied if they do conflict with federal law, although any portions not in conflict may remain intact. Compliance with the policy and federal law could be reviewed with each project, and as an example of a potential conflict, if an applicant can demonstrate that there are gaps in wireless coverage, a project would have to be approved. Under the federal law, the city can't have a direct or effective prohibition of a new wireless facility if there is a demonstratable coverage gap. If a portion of the policy would result in such a prohibition, the policy could not be enforced by the city. It appears that for the projects currently under review, that the city's policy would indeed effectively prohibit the placement of facilities in areas proposed by the two applicants. Therefore, in this situation, the city could comply, require compliance with all portions of the policy with the exception of the setback requirement. This concludes staff's presentation, and myself and Mr. Tilly would be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Kathy or Mr. Tilly?
Are there requests to speak?
Yes.
I'll wait.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and first up to speak is Joe Parker.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Joe Parker, I'm outside counsel for Crown Castle. As you know, my client has the project, the relocation project, which is proposed at Linden Road. In taking a look at the proposed revisions to your ordinance, it goes without saying, I think that the one-to-one ratio is not the favored approach for Crown, presents real challenges with respect to the height of the tower and the setback as it currently exists. Height of towers is not an arbitrary number, it's dependent on carrier objectives. A certain carrier may have to broadcast from a certain range, and that generally will dictate what the height of the tower is. If there are co-locating or additional carriers on the tower, that could also change that height of the tower. Some incidental factors include also that whether it's a structural, a stealth structure of some type, if it's a tree, for example, the tower may have to be a little bit taller to give it the conical shape. So, to that end, these numbers that you see, at least in the Crown application, it's not an arbitrary number, but it's based upon specificity from carriers' objectives, their radio frequency objectives, and the type of structure that's being proposed. So, I ask that you take that into consideration. What did catch my attention, though, is the alternative proposal that staff has mentioned in the report, and that is what I call some, something to the effect of a savings clause. In other words, it gives you the discretion to take a look at a project that may not fit your current criteria, but gives you the opportunity to allow for different factors, including the implications and requirements of federal law. I think that's a better approach, personally. I do have one suggestion, and that is, if you decide to go with a savings clause like that, my suggestion is that it should be put into your ordinance in some fashion. If I missed it, I apologize, I did not see anything that actually proposed putting that language into your ordinance, and I bring that to your attention merely for the purposes of efficiency of processing of applications. When applicants come before you, the first thing that they need to do is understand what the findings are that need to be made for their project. If that language isn't in there, there is the potential that some, there's going to be some confusion, and that is, an applicant's going to look at it and say, well, we don't meet the criteria, and maybe go home, and so you may be driving away some potential projects from your city. The second is, they may not come before you with a very clear presentation, and may require you to tell them on a second, or on the first presentation, to come back and make the findings under telecom law that you're looking for. So, giving applicants the most specific direction as possible when they make that first appearance before you, I think is probably something that you desire from an efficiency of process, so I would ask that you consider that, because I can readily take a look at your ordinance and see if there's a savings clause in there, but note that we can't make the finding, but are only five feet away, perhaps it's an easier objective that I can bring before you at that point, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. John Sneed.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is John Sneed, and my wife is Deb Sneed, she's here in the audience. We are the landowners at 1245 Linden Road, and we are one of the applicants for the proposed cell tower to be relocated onto our site from the one that Crown Castle is being forced to relocate. We, we have, we feel confident that some of the following reasons will help you consider and, and take a look at our site for the cell tower. We're able to accommodate the fully fenced-in cell tower and the four potential equipment buildings that have been proposed to us from Crown Castle. We meet the fire department's required access and turnaround space, and, you know, there was some concern earlier on from the commission about putting these on residences, which we totally understand. We invite the commission to come out to our property and take a look, it is a rural residence, we have many large trees on our property, the potential proposed cell tower on our property would be behind these trees, and, you know, it would be buffered from some of our existing residences. We have a lot of empathy for our existing residences that are there, along with any other potential development that may come. We have, we love this neighborhood, we have totally, you know, enjoyed being there, our neighbors are, are in the audience. Our concern is that, that this potential relocated cell tower be not as intrusive as it possibly can be to any of our neighbors, because we, we totally enjoy the neighborhood and we want that to be. So, we'd, we'd ask that you consider the existing neighbors and the distances of, of the location. Our potential proposed site is much further away, and it would be further away from, from the other applicant's site for where potential noise would come from. We do have empathy for. We do have empathy from the land developer that has purchased the barren property beside our home. We totally understand their position also. However, you know, down the road, if that property were to be developed, any homeowners that would be looking at that property would then have a choice to whether they buy or not, not like existing property owners that are now there with the other applicant's proposal where the cell tower and all the equipment that goes along with, and right now that's proposed to be, at least on our site, four equipment buildings. Those would be right behind some existing homes in a much closer proximity than it would be on ours. So we invite you out. Please come out to our property. We'll not be trespassing. Take a look at our property and visualize where that can be. And the question about, your concern about it being on a residence, we think it's actually beneficial to be on a residence, because you take a look at our property and see how it's maintained. We live there. We're going to make sure that it stays maintained that way, and also there's much more added security when it's on a property that somebody has eyes on every day. We live there. We love it, and we wouldn't want to change a thing. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Ernie Turpin.
I live on a property at 1225. It's not designated anywhere, and my apologies, I'm using last meeting's paperwork, because there was a satellite image on that one that shows where my property is. And in relation to that, it looks like an outbuilding or a barn right next to my property line, which joins this Sneed property and the Hart property. And my disabled wife lives in that little house. It's an established home. It's a granny flat cottage, whatever you name it, and she lives there permanently since 2001. With her disability, she can't go up down the stairs at the main house to go to the bedrooms, and it would be right out her living room window to look at that tower on the Hart property. And with any of the equipment buildings that are there, I went to the established tower right now, and with the cooling fans turn on, if you're within 50 feet, it's very annoying. Each building has two 36-inch cooling fans that come on, intermittent times during the day or night when it's necessary. And if you're within 50 feet, it's very annoying. 75 feet, it's just background noise. You don't really notice it. And with 125-foot tower on the, this proposed on the Hart property, I don't see where the stakes are, the grade stake, I mean, the survey stakes, I don't see how you could get one-to-one away from my property or my wife's residence and still meet those requirements. And my wife's property is 10 feet, her house is 10 feet from the property, my property line. So, thank you. That's my speech.
Thank you. Rick Hart.
Members of the commission, my name is Rick Hart. I'm one of the other applicants. I'd like to address a couple of things. I mean, first of all, we are fine with the one-to-one ratio. We can meet that. I mean, if you looked at even Crown's application, the highest tower, the actual cell site is 94 feet, so we're 100 feet away. I'm not sure where the gentleman's house is, but I don't think he was here at the last meeting. Our plan is to enclose all the equipment in one building. So we could put that anywhere. The building is not where we measure from. It is from the tower. So if we needed to move the building further away from existing houses, that would be no issue at all. As far as, you know, so if there's any noise, I mean, you know, we should be able to solve that pretty simply. We don't have an issue with that. I mean, we'll put everything indoors. We're 100 feet away. I don't see leaving it open to a tower company coming in and deciding that, you know, hey, we got a right here, and by the way, we got five feet, and tough luck, you know? You know, we got a gap in coverage, and, you know, we can stick it here because the federal law says we can. I don't see the advantage to the city. If we can make it work and make it look good and make it something that nobody would even know was there, then I think that's our goal, and that's what we all want to accomplish. So, that's all I have. Thanks for, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for those that spoke? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will ask if any of the commissioners have any questions for staff now. Commissioner Galvin? Commissioner Austin? Commissioner Lebig?
But I only have one comment. Thank you, staff, for, again, working so diligently on this issue. I have a question, actually for Mona. Is she still with us?
I'm here, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. It's just a bad location for me. Under the alternative recommendation, it's that clause that starts off there. I have the same question as Mr. Parker. Would it be to our advantage to put that at the end of the policy, and is that actually required in the policy?
It's not required to be in there, because whether it's in the policy or not, we do have to follow both federal and state law. However, we could take that, I think, sentence or two on the second page of the staff report and insert it into either the last sentence of Section A, Purpose and Intent, or B, Authority.
So for clarification, the staff alternative recommendation would be to leave the policy unchanged, but include this preemptive statement under Purpose and Intent or the Authority section?
More specifically, we would leave the setback part of it as currently written, and then we could insert this language in the location that Mona suggested.
Thank you. If, I think, for me, it would be beneficial to see that language in the policy unless there's a reason to not include it. I would leave that up to Mona's advice. And then comments, then, if we are leaving the text as written under Section, under the Permit section, Section 2E. The text still says that it's permitted between twice the height of the facility and 500 feet, yet under prohibited facilities. It's wireless telecommunications facilities located at a ratio of one-to-one. Do we now have a gap between one-to-one and twice the height? In other words, under permitted facility, shouldn't it be greater than the one-to-one ratio? Comparing, sorry, I know we're flipping pages, because these are on multiple pages. I'm looking at Section 2 Wireless Telecommunication Facilities Permit E, Section E. That one is the old text, between twice the height of the facility and 500 feet from any residential land uses. However, we're changing prohibited facilities, reducing that distance down to a one-to-one ratio from twice the height. So I'm reading as we have a gap between one-to-one and twice the height, where it's, I'm not sure what it's.
Yeah, well, what we're, I think that what's most important on this, this is kind of where we got hung up a little bit staff-wise, too, is what we're attempting to say here essentially is that our minimum setback, on the current policy, the minimum setback for any pole that's near a residentially-zoned property is twice the height. In that, the Planning Commission would have to consider any application that's within twice the height of the proposed facility and 500 feet to a residential area. Beyond 500 feet, depending on how the property was zoned, it could be handled as a zoning administrator version. So in, now coming back to prohibited facilities, what the current policy was written to say is that if you are less than twice the height of the tower from residentially-zoned property, you can't do it at all. So what we were attempting to do here was, and I see where you're going now, Commissioner Lebig, what we were attempting to do is change that to essentially say, instead of twice the height, to anything that's less than, you know, one-to-one. So if we were to proceed with any setback changes tonight, we would need to amend probably Section 2E to talk about, to also have that reflect the sort of one-to-one setback. I think that's really where the, there's 100, essentially, there's, I see where your reference now is to sort of a gap we've introduced. So if we were to entertain changing the setback requirement, we likely would need to change both sections, and presently, we haven't written that into Section 2E just yet. But the option is still on the table to keep the setback policy as written and then address these potential conflicts, you know, case by case pursuant to the language that Ms. Ibrahim suggested that we insert in one of the earlier sections of the document. I think the way to try to get to the root of this tonight is to see if the commission is interested in changing the setback requirement at all, and if so, we can help get through that and get the right language in here. If the commission prefers to keep the setback, you know, the two-to-one as in the policy now, then that's an option, that's sort of a simpler option, you know, to go and require minimal changes to the policy, really kind of almost administrative changes.
Again, I'm in favor of the alternative recommendation. I think we should add that language, the preemptive language, into the policy. I'll leave it to the other commissioners to discuss whether or not we should change the permitting distance. My only request is that it be changed to, we include something like less than or equal, sorry, less than and, less than and equal to or greater than when we talk about these distances, not necessarily be at. That's it. If that didn't make sense, I think Commissioner Olson was going to say it as well, so I'll leave it to him.
No, you bring up a good point on the G three thing. Mathematically, I think we wanted that to say greater than or equal to, or we just wanted to say greater than, the one-to-one, right?
Well, we did work on some alternative language for G three after speaking with you, Commissioner Olson, and hearing Commissioner Moore's comments, and the alternative wording that we came up with was wireless telecommunications facilities, setback a distance that is less than the height of the tower to the nearest residentially-zoned property.
Oh, I thought that read good. Do you want it re-read?
Say it again.
You're reading G three, correct?
Yes. This is how we're proposing to re-revise G three.
If the commission were interested in changing the setback policy at all, that is one way we suggest it could be done, but I think the first and foremost question is, does the commission want to change it from two-to-one to anything else, first and foremost? Or do you prefer to leave it as is?
So we had a lot of discussion over the last couple of meetings, and I thought the direction or where we were sort of going was, we put a lot of work into the changes in the policy, and we wanted to change it, if we were going to change it, we were going to do minimal changes or not change it at all. And we sent you guys back to find an alternative to try and not change it at all, but allow us to meet the federal requirements. And so I think the proposal does that. It doesn't change the setback. So I know it's a little confusing, because we have the old policy in here with the proposed changes at the last meeting, and we're talking about not including those at all, keeping policy as is and allowing, on a case-by-case basis, to bypass that policy to meet the federal law.
That would be one course of action the commission could take, and it would still allow the commission to, in the future, to consider those other projects as they come before you.
So, as you said, I am in favor of not changing the policy, policy as is, but allowing staff, or allowing, putting the language in to allow us to meet that. I think what you're saying is, are you going to hold the commission to see if we're in favor of changing it, or are you?
I do think that sort of question, first and foremost question is, is there a desire to change the two-to-one setback policy, you know, to any other metric? If not, then there is an option for where the commission could leave the policy essentially as is, and then still would be able to consider those projects when they come before you on their individual merits, recognizing that regardless of what the setback policy says, whether it's two-to-one, one-to-one, whatever, you know, that there's still federal law that is applicable and that may preempt us regardless of what the policy might say based on a particular set of circumstances on a particular project. So that's sort of the undercurrent here. So we still see that there's, you know, there's a way to get, you know, to where we need to be, which is to be able to finally consider those projects and anyone that may come in the future. But regardless of, you know, changing the setback policy may not necessarily be the panacea that it may seem to be because of how the federal law may apply based on real-world circumstances on any given project. So therefore, we do recommend, you know, that we would keep the policy, you know, as is, and then consider projects individually as they become before you, and to the extent that federal law preempts, then it preempts.
Thank you. Before I take a motion for recommended action, do I have any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Gero?
Yes, I appreciate the public comment from the residents that have a submitted a letter to us on the aesthetic appearance and the impact this has on them, and the research that folks have looked into, so that, you know, we, as we look forward in the future on these decisions, that we're taking into account that information. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore? Okay, could I get a motion? Commissioner Galvin?
I recommend that we move, I recommend that we move forward, 14. Staff's recommendation to not change the policy, but to take these on the expectations basis.
If I can actually make one point of clarification, the proposed resolution actually is regarding the redline changes that were made to the wireless policy. So if your wish is to move with the alternative, then the motion should be to move forward with the wireless telecommunications facility policy as it is drafted with the addition of the alternative language under subsection A, Purpose and Intent.
That's what I want to do.
But do we, just before we continue with this motion, does that motion include the redline changes?
No.
Okay.
It keeps policy as it was prior to bringing it forward.
Correct.
And just allows that.
Exactly.
Before we vote, could, where are we putting that other language?
It's the wish of the Planning Commission. However, we can keep the formatting the same and simply insert that language at the last sentence of A, Purpose and Intent.
At the end of?
The very first page, Section A, Purpose and Intent.
And what are we going to say there?
The language would be that in any situation where state and or federal law is directly applicable and preempts a specific city standard, that standard cannot be applied. This determination will be made on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Lebig, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Do we need to take a roll?
Because it was a unanimous decision, we don't need to take a roll.
Okay, thank you.
Just read the appeal procedure, please. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission this matter to City Council tonight by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. We'll go on to item number four, Public Workshop on Changes to the City's Zoning Ordinance Regarding Retail Sales of Firearms and Ammunition. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you very much. This is a, a, we're in to workshop tonight regarding some more specific zoning changes pertaining to retail sales of firearms and ammunition. This particular matter did come before your commission at our, at our prior meeting, and we had some direct, general feedback from the commission, and so tonight, we have a lot more specifics for you to consider, and especially in anticipation of a future public hearing on this particular item, and then consideration for the City Council. So, Commissioner, recall, presently, retail sales of firearms and ammunition are permitted in many of our lighter commercial zones, mixed-use zones, and central business district, and other, other similar type zoning districts in our community. We were contacting and approached by the owner of a formerly had a store here in town regarding this and his desire to relocate to the central business district, which was met by some opposition from staff, as well as from, from the city's police department. So, to try to seek some clarification on this matter, particularly since the, the policy was, our zoning ordinance was also silent on, where this, this could be, activity would be conducted on an accessory basis, we wanted to try to clean all that up once and for all. So, at our prior meeting, the commission gave us some direction about, that they concur that some of the zoning districts where retail firearms sales were, presently would be allowed, were perhaps not the most optimal zoning districts for that particular land use. So, tonight, we've returned to you with a, some recommended changes to those zoning districts where this particular land use would be allowed, and particularly in the intervening time, we've also had some consultation with the city's police department, and our recommendations tonight incorporate the input we received from the police. So, under this proposal we have before you tonight, and I'll refer you to attachment one, provided a, a bridge version of our land use and zoning matrix for our community. It shows those zones where in the strike-through where the retail firearm sales are presently allowed on a conditional basis, and then it does indicate where those some new zones where we would have that particularly be, you know, a change. So, at this stage, so we would recommend, in addition to the C three zone, which is our general commercial zone, that we would open up the business park, limited industrial, light industrial, and heavy industrial zones where retail firearm sales could be conducted on a retail basis. The police department did recommend that those remain a conditional use as they are currently in our matrix, but then have them in the different zones. The only other piece that we, of information we received directly from the police department was that they did recommend that these type of businesses not be located within a proximity of a freeway on-ramp for security reasons, so we have included some language in that, that would help, help supplement the definition of firearms and ammunition to include a prohibition on being located within 1,000 feet of a freeway on-ramp. So, those are the nature of the zoning ordinance changes for, for this particular land use that we have proposed. I am seeping your feedback tonight so that we can refine this to the commission's preferences, so we can have a future public hearing, and then bring this matter to the City Council for ultimate decision. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Tilly?
Certainly would encourage public comment on this tonight.
I do have one request to speak. Brent Dawson?
As you may recall, we met back in April 3rd, where I discussed, I guess, my dialogue that I opened with the city to, to discuss changes to the zoning and how it obviously affected an expansion or a establishment of firearms, or retail firearms business within the city. I had the opportunity to, to meet with Mr. Tilly and Ms. Charlene Hamilton, following the April 3rd meeting, and I think it was a good dialogue where I got to hear some of the city's concerns or their concerns, as well as kind of educate them on some of the things I see from my point of view. I had a chance to look at the agenda report. I, I support it, I suppose, the changes, and, and it also provides, I think, a better ability to find a better, a more suitable location than I had once, yeah, once looked at over in the central business district. So, from, from, from my end, it helps move my project forward, and I just want to say thanks for, to Mr. Tilly and Ms. Hamilton, and to the commission for considering these changes. Thank you.
I have no other request to speak. Do I have any other questions from the commissioners?
David, I, I guess, are we going to have somebody from the police department talk to us? And, and, and the reason I ask that, I mean, we had probably one of the largest firearms, ammunition sales in Northern California, the Bill, Big R, which is right next to the freeway, and I noticed they said something about they don't want to sell firearms or ammunition by the freeway. Is there some statistic that they're going to provide us with as to why that's not desirable? I mean, I understand that if you went in and stole a bunch of guns, Joe'd probably know better than anybody, but I mean, go in and steal guns and jump on the freeway, I guess it's bad, but I don't recall us ever having an issue at Big R.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I don't recall if there ever had been or either, I mean, that store's been gone for, you know, a number of years, you know, now. This was a recommendation, you know, from the police department, and we certainly can request that they attend our, our, our next hearing on this particular matter.
Or at least give us a, a reasoning behind why they're proposing.
Well, principally, it is a matter of security, like, just as you said, if, you know, someone were to, you know, burglarize a store like this, and they can hop right on the freeway and they're gone, and obviously firearms is a sensitive issue for, for the police department, you know, in this regard, and it's, it's not also not something we've had a lot of very, very recent experience with here in our community, since, you know, Big R's been gone for, probably since sometime in the 90s, I believe, if not mistaken, so, so this is kind of where, where we're headed. We feel like we're trying to follow some of the commission's direction from our previous, you know, discussion on this about some of the other zoning districts, and this would include the zoning district where Mr. Dawson's location was, you know, previously.
What about the, down in here, you're talking about that you, the staff's been out at ammunition?
Yeah, our director, Ms. Hamilton, did visit that particular location, and just to sort of see how it operates. Just, you know, we, certainly, there's a lot of inquiries we've had about it, and some of their advertising may, may imply that it's a little different type of operation than what it really is, and how it was conveyed to us when they first applied for the business license a couple of years ago.
I mean, they have a, they have a business license to sell guns and ammunition and stuff currently.
Well, well, they do, and we put that, we allowed that, put that in there, sort of as the firearms broker concept that, you know, the commission had taken up here, you know, a few years ago, and what one of the parts of that was, that it weren't supposed to have any really inventory, you know, on-site, and I know on Ms. Hamilton's visit, then they did have some inventory there, and so that did take them somewhat out of the spirit, at least, of that firearms broker provision that the commission approved in a zoning change a couple of years ago. If these changes here were to go forward, and if they did want to expand into a much more retail-type operation, they could do so at that location, you know, through the use permit process, you know, should the commission wish to, you know, keep this being a conditional use in these zones.
I, I, I guess my, my final comment, I mean, you know, if, if a guy already has a business that he's operating, it just seems difficult that we're going to go back and ask for him to come in for a conditional use, unless there's a specific reason for it. But secondarily, and probably easier for me to see as a picture, so when you come back, it'd be nice to see where this would be a permitted use in our city, on our maps.
And if I could make one comment about the existing use, that would be considered a legal non-conforming use, so as long as they continued operation the way that they have been, they would not need to come back and seek a conditional use permit.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, unless they're not in compliance with the intent.
As long as they are in compliance and are operating the business the way that they have always been and not expanding the use, then they would not need to come in and seek a conditional use permit in the event that we change these regulations.
Yeah, then, to the extent that a use permit would only be necessary in that scenario is if, if they wanted to become a full retail, you know, type operation, and that has not been how they have characterized it when we first approved the business license circa 2011.
Anyway, my, my final comment was the map, David. It's easier for me if I see a map and you say, here's where we can do it, and here's where we can't, it kind of shows how we're trying to take care of it.
Yeah, that will, we can easily do that, and there's, you know, numerous properties. We have quite a bit of industrially zoned property in our community that could, could afford some locations, and hopefully, Mr. Dawson can find another location and secure another lease for his business.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, the, the proposed zoning matrix, that completely eliminates the distinction between primary and accessory use, correct?
Yeah, so we, that was a debate before, so now, whether you're doing it as a primary or accessory, if it's retail, that's that. It doesn't, it doesn't matter anymore, that's sort of, we tried to simplify it and not have to deal with the, add up the 25% and all those other metrics.
But it's conditional, then, in these new zones?
Correct.
No matter what?
Correct.
Sure. I, I definitely respect the chief's comments on this, but given that these are all conditional use permits, and that every single application will be taken on a case-by-case basis, I'm not sure it's needed in the comment about the on-ramp, I'm not sure it's needed in the definition, because this does affect Jefferson Harbor Enterprise Reed, which is IKEA's shopping center. I, I wouldn't necessarily want to preclude a business from being able to be in a successful business location, but that's just my thought, that's my only, only comment.
Commissioner Austin? Ms. Galvin?
So, I, I'm sure they had a reason for that, that clause, and I'm sure they'll come in and, and give an explanation or write something out.
Yeah, we will certainly request that our, a member of our police department, you know, attend our next meeting. Cannot guarantee that their availability will be, coincide with our meeting, but we will certainly make that strong request.
I, I'd like to, I agree with Charlie's comments earlier, I'm not quite sure what kind of complaints you're hearing, but that business has been open for a while, and I've heard nothing but good things about it, and if, in fact, they did come in for a CUP, it's been an existing business in this community for a while, and I'm sure staff would work, work with them through that issue, if it came forward.
Yeah, we would, we would anticipate that, you know, a CUP for this type of business, you know, going into an existing building, you know, would be one that we could move fairly quickly, may not need a, you know, a lot of architectural review, landscaping, all those other things that sometimes come in with new construction, so it would be mostly looking at the location and the operator and their kind of background about it, so hopefully be one we could bring forward to the commission in short, fairly quick order.
You know, David, actually, that brings up a good point. I mean, to me, it would be more relevant to see who the operator was and have the police check that than the location of the building. I mean, I don't know why, but it just seems like that's more important to me.
Yeah, this certainly is a heavily regulated industry.
As it is.
You know, at the state and federal level as well, so.
I'm not sure if retail firearms operators go through the same background and requirements as, as. Probably by DOJ and ATM.
Yeah, that has been our experience with the handful of sort of firearms brokers, businesses that we have had come to town the last few years.
Okay, so going forward, we have a suggestion of the map by Commissioner Moore, showing the different areas that we would require a conditional use permit, and a request for the police department to have a representative here for any questions we might have.
If, if they aren't able to attend, I will ask them to at least provide some written material for the commission's consideration.
David, I think my question was, why would it be 1,600 feet? Why is it, you know, really that important? And then, like Russ said, since everything's conditional, you know, that's something you could look at if somebody was to apply, so I...
Yeah, certainly, that would be something we would be looking at, you know, regardless, and...
I mean, that's the question, if they can't attend, that, that's what I'd be looking for.
Certainly, the police also would be heavily involved with any review of any use permit application, you know, certainly before we brought it, before your commission, so.
And Commissioner Guerrero?
Yes, I, I do think, though, looking at it on a case-by-case basis, as Commissioner Galvin mentioned, that, I think, would give us some more insight from the police department's point of view, what those concerns may be related to the setback requirement, but if it's, if it's broadly applied, it, it pretty much excludes our ability to make any, to have any discretion on this decision, and then looking at an opportunity for a business to develop, as Commissioner Leibig, you know, mentioned, I, I would hesitate to unilaterally make that decision with that, with that bullet, without any background, so if they can provide any research or, you know, anecdotal information would be helpful, moving forward.
Thank you. I'll go on to informal discussion. Have any?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second meeting adjourned.